Often told that's my most attractive design.
You know.
Not true. Let me tell you that, that is the biggest lawyer ever here. All right, so four fifteen, four seventeen.
Yeah.
Actually, Cindy, do we have minutes to approve?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Do you have your agenda?
Actually, it doesn't make a difference. I wasn't here, so I can't.
No, I think you can. This is.
I was here last meeting, so.
We, I think we couldn't do them last time, right?
Yeah, but when Tracy gets here, we can do them.
Yeah.
Cindy, just remind me if she gets her, all right, so four fifteen, four seventeen, which we've seen before. The one big issue I have with it, that they're asking for, the lot right now is two, two separate lots. So that before we can move any further, in my opinion, the applicant has to.
Dan was the chair.
Has to accept or admit that they're going to merge the lots.
That's just a sure no one leaves anything.
If we were to go forward, we have to condition this on merging.
Did we, did we clarify the East Main Street issuance of COs as well?
Yeah, this is separate COs. The building, the department backed in eighty-three, I think it was, received drawings to merge the buildings or have an opening between them. Drawings were never approved and it was never followed up on. We don't know when the work was done. It's, so we'll have to investigate, but as I made and spoke to Mark with, I think that would have to be addressed as part of this application, that the buildings aren't going to be merged as well as the properties.
Didn't we discuss that at our last presentation to us, that we asked them to clarify the issuance of the COs? They, because we already knew that they were two separate lots. There, this application is based as if it's one building.
Correct.
Therefore, this is not a valid application because it's not applying correctly to what's existing as far as documentation is concerned.
We have the documentation on the COs. We got all that. It is determined that they are two separate buildings, but the application is for one building to unfold.
Correct.
It needs to be revised.
That's what they were supposed to do. They were supposed to revise this and then come back to us as two separate buildings that they were applying for to show us that they were making the movement to merge this to be one.
But that's the application stamp now. You can't look forward right now with two separate lots because they have one zoning board application. If they were going to treat it as two separate lots, they would need two separate applications. So they either gotta come, they either gotta come today and say, I'm gonna pull back my application and submit two zoning applications, or yes, I'm going to merge a lot.
But that's what we told them the last time they were here.
Well, that's what I'm hoping they're gonna do, but that doesn't always mean it's gonna happen. So we're gonna find out.
Do we have?
Wouldn't they have had to do that with the building department prior?
Uh, we can make, no, we can make it a condition of the, of the approval.
Okay.
Do we have?
Just discussing that.
Do we have the actual application submitted for that? Yeah, yeah.
That's actually Australian version. I shot Irish.
Half of the morning.
Top of the morning?
Top of the morning.
Good.
Yeah.
You can have mine.
Right. That's where I was in England, so there was no mistake. It's brought up after. Right, but he did a paddle look. So is Mark into?
Apologize.
That's why I have a money agenda. I just wanted you to know.
Obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
No, 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 no. No, no, absolutely. That was a project. I was unfortunate. She was sober.
I was gonna be like, well, there was a priority and a very.
But she was sober. I mean, good luck.
With the justification.
So Tracy, we were just talking about four fifteen, four seventeen.
Were you here for that meeting?
East Main, that's the push from Cape Town. You here for the last meeting? Okay. They came in, there were a couple of things upstanding. Oh, I gave them one. Oh, okay. All right, let me just.
We're, the March is tonight because Mark is back. And then we have to approve April next meeting with Dan because he was.
The March, I mean, it should be in once called.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Tracy, just give you a quick summary. Four fifteen, four seventeen. The Al McPhillo Building and the Fame and Road. Two separate, single, they're two separate, two separate buildings, COs separate. Eighty-three, they came in with an application to merge them. They never went any further with it. The plan's never got a provision. As it sits, it's separate. They have an application in front of us for zoning, for zoning, for zoning. The problem is, is that unless they are going to merge the buildings, we can't approve the zoning. Because if we were to, if we were to go forward and condition this without merge, the question is, is which, where, which lot is a variant run?
So what they did is at some point, they created a hallway, just a new.
That's their, this is what they proposed.
So this was, they, they, so there's a hallway that kind of merges these two buildings that was never, was never recognized, was never approved. There was no permit put in place.
They were adding a set of stairs. I think it's this, somewhere along the way, they're adding a set of stairs.
So there's two separate buildings, two separate businesses.
They're attached, but they're two se, on, but the two separate.
They're not attached legally.
No, no, no. They're physically attached, the buildings? The pass through is the, is the question. Is there an interior?
Yes, they, they disclosed at the last meeting.
They did, they did, there is.
They, they.
There were drawings that were submitted, but never approved.
Yeah, so they just, Dominic went ahead and put a, put a doors in and did whatever. Completely, isn't, so he, you have these two buildings, they're adjacent and a budding. He said, can I have permission to put a doorway in between the two and I'm gonna do this? Never closed out that permit, never got the CO. Then they went and they're applying now for a change of use and to turn it into a multifamily dwelling on the upper, maintaining retail on the lower, bumping out, they, there's a staircase here and they want to bump out a new staircase here in the back. And they're, they're needing variances for all of this. This is Main Street, this is East Main. And the problem is, these are two separate lots. These are two separate buildings. There are two separate COs. And they have one application. Unless they indicate that they are going to merge these properties and merge this building, they then have to come back with like two applications.
So then what, what, um, what do they, what do you want them to change reuse?
Well, yeah, and then three veterans.
Change of use and three variants.
Um, both parking, this fireman, floor ratio, they want, they want two point two where two was six codes. FAR, uh, the lot size, they need three thousand square feet. They have six. Give or take. And constructing on both Main and East Main Street. So then C one district. Everyone needs to make a video of the main street. For parking. Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, for the third variant, East Main Street, the Main Street, East Main Street variance is because the apartments, right?
You know, apartments front, you know, and.
Right, so Main or East Main Street, you can't have apartments on the front. The gold. Sorry, you didn't, you didn't tell me. Are you still, you need to stop. Can we get you to talk?
With that Main Street? That's Regency.
Yeah, but that, I think that, that doesn't technically front on, Main Street fronts on the alley, that alleyway that front door.
That is front, okay, correct. You're right.
Like my eyes are closed.
Yes, all the other buildings are.
No residential on Main Street.
Right. Right, well, because, yeah, it's on that alley.
That's what we, that's what we just got, I was corrected on, because they are not fronting on Main Street. They front on.
Whatever that alley.
The alleyway.
Says the lawyer, says the lawyer sitting across from me. So.
On the.
They, they probably did. Because there, there is a, they do have a connection.
They did, they needed, you know, they were getting disclosed in their last presentation that they did merge the buildings, that there is accessway between the two and they've been functioning that way without proper permit. CO has that. And it was probably exact, for that exact reason. They were probably told at that time, you can't do this, you have two separate, you need to merge this, you need to do this.
You can't merge a building like that. Yeah, but you can't just do it in the middle of the night. Yeah.
Traced. This is the, this is what, there was nothing, nothing was ever done by. Correct. Oh. So. Yes, it would be great if we could do that, but there was a million things that we did that we never said to be. Properly, properly. Now we deal with what's in front of us. I'm just saying, in a utopian world. You get the answer with a utopian.
Yeah, it won't last long, trust me.
And I'm still in way too long.
We would, we would get Antonio's.
I can't swim.
What?
I can't swim. Are we on an island? Where are we?
Oh, by yourself.
All right. We'll be there.
Okay. Want to approve these minutes?
From March?
From March.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for the March twenty-seventh, two thousand five ZB meeting minute? Going on?
That was the Brownstown and Beltier Road, that was like African land, again.
Hearing none and seeing none, I make a motion that we approve the March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. Right, second, all in favor?
All right.
I made the motion, seconded by elected.
Has South Street started their construction?
Not a.
From this March meeting?
I don't think so.
They, they haven't submitted a building.
I was having.
Honestly, it's probably the same with that. Yeah.
That's the one where they came, what they have, the garage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, it's the one at the end, the, all the way up on the cul-de-sac, the, the builder, Al Sutton, who's gonna take that dilapidated old house and make it. The courtyard.
Yep.
Garden courtyard.
Yes, 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 yes.
I was just, I'm interested to watch that. That's gonna be pretty.
Yep.
See what happens. And when they find out, it's five hundred thousand dollars to build.
He's got it.
It's good.
Seven minutes.
That was last time, remember? He was, he was elected as chair because. I don't know.
Yes.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So. Tracy, since you didn't hear from. Three oh five.
Congratulations. Awesome. She's beautiful and she's brilliant. She's gonna do amazing things.
She's already, she's already on a good path. That's how I started. One more bartending than you ever did in four years of college. That's okay.
I know. It's like, how do you see, oh, that's, that's my programming.
Work with it here, okay? All right, so. It already was a garden of some sort at one point. This leaves, we don't need here. Hey, Tom, do you have the, the picture of three oh five of the picture that shows a defense and everything? One we were looking at when you were here.
Yeah, it's, it should be in the folder.
Could be, I don't know.
Yes.
That one.
That, yeah. That's all. Perfect, right here, somebody.
What do you guys need? Let me take this away so we don't get.
This is.
This is the triangle.
This is, yeah. You want a folder? Here? Right now, you're only, um.
Uh, Main Street.
Only a lot of. Yeah. I think you're only allowed certain, you're only allowed a certain footage. You're also gonna try to pick up property along. Think that they're looking forward to the property. So, yeah.
Wait, this is existing or no?
Yeah, it looks, it appears, yes.
It's existing?
Well.
Oh, yeah.
Multure this right now, but your picture is probably. It doesn't.
That was pertaining to the, uh. He just put the building, or the. Oh, that what they're talking about?
Yes, when we put together, uh, it puts some props, the solar panels, which is on the upside of the view, the other side of the house. Um, so. Yes, yeah, so it's on that side there. Um, you got a violation, you got a permit?
First treat there, and vegetation.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're assuming that was Jim Close did with building, like vegetation is done.
They're saying it's not. They're saying they don't like the way it was.
Well, they're saying it doesn't meet the standards of natural, of, for, required by the code, but they, but it was signed off by the staff, so they can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, the staff looks at it, you know, I have to, yeah. Bring the mics up, right?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five zoning board of appeals hearing for the village of Port Jefferson. Tonight, we have two applications on the agenda. I would ask that if you could please put your phone on silent for the duration of the hearing. We have two items on the agenda this evening. The first item on the agenda will be three oh five California Avenue, appeal number ZB dash zero zero one seven dash two five, tax map number zero two zero six dash fifteen dash three dash twenty-five point eight. It's an R, it's in the RB two residential district. Its location is on the east side of California, south of Hawthorne Avenue. Property owner is John Barbis and Elizabeth Coin Living Trust. Applicant is John Barbis. Contact is John Barbis. It's for a proposed driveway expansion. Pursuant to the village code, Port Jefferson Village Code, section two fifty dash thirty-three, section three, provisions acceptable to driveways in the RA, RA one, RB two, RB three, and RM districts. Subsection A, any part of the driveway which is located forward of the front of the foundation line of a dwelling and forward of a garage may not exceed the width of the garage by more than five feet and may not be located less than five feet from any sideline of the property. Mr. Barbis, are you here? Please come forward. I'm gonna ask that you be sworn in. Jen, can you swear in, please? Yes, Mr. Barbis, give us, uh, can you tell us a little bit, can you put the survey up, please, if you wouldn't mind? When you're ready, Mr. You can. Put the survey up so we can.
And the, the length of that is roughly forty feet. Those are the dimensions you were looking for.
Okay.
Actually measured it myself. So, um.
I'm sorry, you said fourteen feet wide at the widest point?
Correct, because it's four feet is the offense, because the HVAC units are on the side of the house and then ten feet gates.
Okay.
So the idea of this is because I have five vehicles. So rather than having them in the street, I want to put them, at least one more on the side there. But other than that, that's really the reason.
Okay. Um, is this, is the bor, is the border, it looks like from a picture we received from staff, it looks like that the, the outline of this is existing already with some type of mulch or?
Correct. It's actually dirt, but yes. That's correct.
All right.
I actually use that to bring the mulch to the backyard too, those gates.
Okay.
Makes life ten times easier.
All right. Um, I have a concern here. Um, can you zoom in just a hair? Um, right now it looks like from this survey, you've encroached on your, your neighbor's property. Um, line from that, you know, again, um, the survey wasn't update, you know, wasn't updated to include this, so it looks like he was just drawn in quickly.
Correct.
But from this, it looks like it's on your neighbor's property.
That's correct. Yeah, no, I corrected that, um, for when I did the, um, the dormer on top of the house just recently. So, I moved it in so that it wasn't on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
Which was just papers. The papers, the, uh, what do you call the, uh?
Belgian block?
Belgian blocks.
Okay, so. Um, you know, my, my concern is that if we approve anything, uh, like this, we're gonna have to have you update the, the can, the approval be conditioned on updating the survey and the survey showing that you're not encroaching on you.
Well, it's, that's fine because I have to do a new survey anyway because I'm doing a pool in the backyard.
Okay, so perfect. Um, anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
How do you access your garage other than the garage doors? Is there a side entry, you know, standard door to the garage?
No. We actually use the garage door mainly to enter the house.
Okay.
And you have vinyl in the whole property. It looks like white vinyl fence, am I correct?
That on the back, back of the property, yes, it's white.
Okay.
It's enclosed because my daughter has Down syndrome, the safety.
Okay, perfect.
Can you explain, um, I'm just, what is the width of those, those gates?
Those gates are ten feet.
So, the two gates to the left of the home, the opening is ten feet in itself?
Correct. And that Belgian block is just after the main post. So, it's, it's like fourteen foot six is the actual.
Can you put the picture up from the, uh, report, please?
Yeah, there we go. Okay, perfect.
Alexia, there's the.
No, that's exactly what I was just looking at. So, I was just trying to see exactly why the request was for fourteen feet and not for ten feet, but I, I was able to see with the calculation of the width of the gates. That's why I inquired about that.
Because that's roughly four feet HVAC units right on the side of the house there.
Okay. Have you looked into moving your driveway five feet the other direction? Why would you go closer to your neighbor?
Because that property is used, if you look at the dimension, the, the way the property is actually cut. Right idea was to cut the property that way. Actually, the front of that driveway is actually, uh, even closer than five feet if you look at the survey on the bottom. It's probably more like two feet at the very bottom of the driveway because of the way the property is actually designed.
And also, just to clarify, um, on your application, on the survey that was submitted with the original application, the, uh, expanded area was as proposed paved driveway, and now you've amended that and it's to be a gravel driveway?
No, no, no. It was always a gravel. It, that is gonna be blacked out totally. It wasn't, that was gravel to the left right now. It's gravel slash dirt.
Okay, so you are.
When they did the survey, that's what it was.
So, your intention is to asphalt, right?
Correct. Makes sense to match it.
Absolutely, just. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Do you have any proposed drainage for the driveway in that area or anything?
No, why would I need that for that location? That whole house is, that whole driveway is already positioned going towards the street draining down.
Okay.
The property is not draining towards the house.
I'm inquiring because you're adjacent to your neighbor's property and by paving it, it's gonna possibly cause runoff with excessive rain. So, I was just wondering if that was, that was in a plan or, or considered in any way?
No.
Okay.
You plan on leaving the Belgian block and just paving up to the existing Belgian block as it is now?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Questions or comments? All right. Um, Mister Barbis, I have a, uh, a letter from the public, so I'm gonna read it to the record, so. Um, dear Cindy and Andy, then, I'm sorry, this was sent from the Port Jeff Civic Association on May twenty second, two thousand twenty five at one twenty five PM today. Uh, the subject is appeal number ZB dash seventeen dash twenty five. Dear Cindy and Andy, the note below is in regard to appeal number ZB seventeen dash twenty five, Suffolk County Tax Map Number zero two zero six dash fifteen dash three dash twenty five point eight, physical address three oh five California Avenue, Port Jeff. Three neighbors of three oh five California Avenue have asked me to convey their objections to the variance currently under consideration. Their concern is not with the variance itself per se, but with the planning and building department, with how the planning and building department has handled permitting and variances in light of prior violations by this property owner. When the current owners moved in, they removed several mature trees and all understory vegetation from the property. They were issued a ticket with the requirement to revegetate. However, the current revegetation consisting of a row of evergreen trees, a single cherry sapling in one corner, and a manicured lawn does not meet the minimum standards for the natural vegetation as required by code. Despite this, the planning and building department has issued permits for solar panel installation, allowed building alterations, and now is considering a variance related to the driveway installation. The letter is submitted to formally record an objection to the manner in which the vegetation-related code enforcement is being handled. The neighbors are concerned about the lack of attention to the aspect of the code. If the variance is granted, they hope it will be conditioned upon full and proper revegetation of the property rather than issued without further requirements. The neighbor has requested to remain anonymous so that, uh, so as not to ca, cause any animosity between individual neighbors. Sincerely, Anna. Who is, who is in over?
I already know who it is.
Okay, not, it's public record anyway.
Yeah, no, that, um, she's had a problem. Actually, um, when I put up the shed in the backyard, she tried to call the town on me, even though it was in code.
And Mister Barbis, we're not asking you to respond to the letter. I'm just, I'm bound to read the letter into the record. Um, I'm gonna ask staff, uh, to give us a little bit of history on the permit for solar panels. Tom, could you just, uh, tell us what this? Permit was issued.
Permit was issued.
Inspected by. Okay, and the permit is clo, permit's closed?
Closed, yeah.
Okay. All right, and this is located, uh, completely on the other side of the structure that would.
On the other side of the structure, on the west side was with solar panels before.
Okay. Okay. All right. So then, so that, that issue is closed?
Proper channel and. For both the solar panels and for the revegetation post the, the clearing.
The solar panels received a permit and a CO. They don't have to go through planning.
Right.
Well, I did, went through the building.
Yeah, the tree clearing and grading did go through planning.
And it was, it all cleared?
Yep, and the violations were cleared. Thank you. You're welcome.
Excellent. Um, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this application from the public? Hearing none, being none. Is there any other questions or comments from the board on this application?
Could you have done this without making it so wide? Like, you said you just want a car.
No, the issue, the issue is, is if there's a vehicle such as my black transit there in the picture, you can't make that turn to even get up through there if that transit's parked there. So, you need that depth to even make that turn. Trust me, I've tried it. I'm in construction myself.
I think what the question was is, was in regards to the width, that your, your application is to put you for the full width of fourteen feet, which encroaches pretty close to the neighbor's property while you're applying for the variance because it doesn't meet the minimum required setback. So, I think. Tracy, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but questioning why it couldn't be ten feet, why you're asking for fourteen.
That's more for aesthetics. It's the gate's a ten foot and it's four foot, so it's more for aesthetics.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Uh, I'd like to make a note for the record that on the application, on the application I was read, it was plus, uh, plus or minus five hundred square feet based on the dimensions provided by the applicant were more like five hundred and eighty-eight square feet, but that's without doing field measurements or any surveying. So, I'm just giving you rough dimensions, um, for consideration by the board. One last time, any questions or comments from the board? No questions or comments from the public? I'm gonna make a motion that we close this hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mister Barbis. All right. Then do you obviously have a copy of this letter for the record?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Uh, all right, next application, four fifteen, four seventeen, East Main Street. Uh, this is appeal number, appeal number ZB dash four dash twenty four, tax map number two oh six dash twelve dash ten dash one and two point two. Zoning C one Central Commercial District. Location four fifteen dash four seventeen, East Main Street, existing three-story building in the historic district. Property owner is Pietro Perillo. Applicant is Pietro Perillo. Contact is Woodhull Expediting Incorporated, uh, care of Amy DeVito. Description, proposed mixed-use apartment building. The proposed action requires the following variances for the Villa, Port Jefferson Village Code. Two fi, uh, two fifty attachment to bulk and parking regulations for non-residential, floor area ratio of two required, two point two requested. Two fifty dash eighteen point F, point four, point C, point one. A lot on which any proposed freestanding apartment is to be constructed shall have a minimum of forty thousand square feet, fifty, five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine point six square feet requested. Two fifty dash eighteen point F, point four, point C, point two, shall be constructed only on the portion of the district where, which does not front on Main or East Main Street, constructed on Main Street requested. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we reopen the hearing from Cindy. When was the last time we heard this application? March? All right. I wanna make a motion to reopen the hearing of February twenty second. Do I have a second? Twenty seventh.
AC, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can you just be sworn in again?
I do.
Good evening, Amy.
Good evening, Mister Chairman and members of the board. Amy DeVito, Woodhull Expediting with offices at eight hundred Veterans Memorial Highway Hop Dog.
Um, do you have any, do you have any presentation or do you want me just to?
I, I, I don't really have anything else to add, uh, from the prior presentation with me and Michael Morbilo, the architect, and just anxious to hear what the board's feedback is.
Um, and I'll just, I'll speak for concern that number of the board members have brought up and myself. Um, currently, right now, you have two separate applications, uh, two separate lots. Uh, you're asking for variances that would cover both lots. Is your, uh, is it your intention and for the record, are you going to merge these lots?
Yes, uh, we're happy to merge the lots if this application is approved. So, that's why in the last hearing I had suggested that we make, uh, an approval if one is forthcoming contingent on the merger. I don't know that my client would merge the lots otherwise because we would then be moving to perhaps a different plan altogether.
Okay, well, the way, the way I see it and, um, the number of the board members see it is that there's no, there's only two paths forward, merger or two, two separate applications. Your, your, you, you say your client is, uh, oh, is open to having the, uh, condition that this lot, this lot, uh, if the approvals are issued, they'll be conditioned that the lot is merged?
Correct.
Um. And when you say application is approved, you mean zoning board application?
Zoning board application, correct.
Okay. Um, because right now that, at the moment, isn't, for me, there wouldn't be a path forward if that wasn't the case, unless you wanted, unless you wanted to go a completely different route, but I don't see a path forward.
Yeah, understood, and we, we're agreeable to that. Um, it makes sense. It's just, you know, to merge the lots prior to getting to this point just didn't seem, um, logical.
Um, and we've also conter, can, confirmed that you have two COs, one for each building.
Correct.
Uh, as it stands right now, and that was verified by staff. Um, you did indicate at the last hearing that currently there is access from one building to the other. They're physically connected, but there's actually a access inside the building.
Yeah, uh, I haven't been in the area where this access is, but Michael Morbilo has, and he was able to confirm that on the record last time that there actually is interior access.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna open it up to the board. Does the board have any questions or comments?
So, the heart of this application in very basic terms is for this interior stairway and elevator, right? That's the main substance of what brought this application, no?
Well, the, uh, yes, yes and no. So, because of that small addition for that stairway, we are going over the, uh, permissible FAR.
Right.
So, that triggered that variance. Um, as far as the variance for, um, the fronting on Main or East Main, we're obviously, we are fronted on Main and East Main, so we have no choice but to, to work with that. So, that's that variance, of course. And then, um, we have a lot size currently of fifty-eight eighty-six where forty thousand is required. Uh, the lot is the lot size that it's always been, of course, so that's also a variance, but the, yes, the main trigger is the, you know, um, the addition for the stairs, correct?
Right.
Which is gonna be required for proper egress.
Right. All those other items triggered as a result of the intention of the, of, uh, of the application was to, you know, propose an interior stairway and the elevator. From there flowed all of these reviews.
Correct. The change of use in general, yes. Yeah, to change the use of the building from, uh, office to apartments.
Right. So, the elevator is necessary in order to achieve that?
Correct.
Is, and the staircase is as well because you need multiple?
That's correct.
Without those two, you cannot make that change of use.
That is correct.
So, Amy, last time you were here, um, the property owner adjacent to you guys, um, had some concerns.
Yes.
Do you have any further questions or clarifications on his concerns? I believe the gentleman is here now, but, um, he had some, he had some concerns about shared, it looks like shared driveway or shared access, you know, areas around the building.
Well, his concerns were, uh, from what I recall, um, they were concerned about construction staging. They didn't want it to be on their property, which we said that we would abide under the building department's regulations for whatever that may be. I know that was one of his concerns. Uh, one of the other concerns was that he was concerned that, uh, any tenant in the building may park in his designated lot, which obviously any tenant that comes in will be notified within their lease that they do not have access to that parking lot, nor should they be parking there. Um, we obviously aren't going to be there policing that all the time, and we can't say that there's not spillover that may occur at any point from current tenants in that building now. Uh, but the intention is, of course, to notify everybody that nobody is to park in that parking area. So, um, I think those were his major concerns. I know the other concern was that these were two separate lots, and he was concerned that, you know, this really wasn't a legitimate application without that, which you have now clarified with staff, and we obviously are agreeable to merging the lots.
And speaking of parking, although it's not part of this, how do you, how do you, I have a speeding parking. I know there's been talk about legacy and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, there, there is no room for a parking lot on this property. The entire property is, is taken up by the building, so parking on this property is not possible. Um, because of the prior CO, technically, we are allotted, I, if I recall, I don't have the plan in front of me, but if I recall, a certain amount of parking spots. Tom, do you recall what that number was by any chance? Okay. Uh, we were allotted a certain amount of parking spots under the current use, which we actually don't need as many parking spots under an apartment use. So, we're actually, uh, lessening the burden as far as code is concerned on how many spots would be, uh, needed. Um, I lived on East Main Street for many, many years. I did not have a parking lot. I went. I went and got myself a little parking pass and parked in the municipal lots, um, or I parked on the street. And that's what most people I know that live in the downtown area do if they don't have a building with parking. So, um, that, that would be the, the assumed plan.
And you realize that if we approve this application and you move forward to planning, there's a possibility you may be back in front of us based on what the planning, planning board might, you know, they might have, they may, whatever changes they may require of you or request of you. So that may push you back to us. You, you understand that?
Yes, I do.
I feel like parking is going to be one of those issues, but, you know, we'll take that.
The, the, um, conversation between me and Mr. Freeling was that, that was attempting to be, attempt, or he was attempting to deal with that. Uh, yeah, I think it was a, what was that called, the program? Parking stall demand reduction. Um, parking stall demand reduction. Um, and if that does not come to fruition, we do understand that we may potentially be back in front of you for a parking variance.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for the application? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this application?
When reciting this, the, the COs that were part of this, the, the historical summary, are, are, are these directly related to one or the other divisible lot? Or is that just a mixture between the two? It's hard to ascertain.
Do you mean the parking?
No, 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 as we look at the history of all the COs that were issued from 1976 onward, right?
COs.
Mm-hmm. So this is, this is so this is a comprehensive between both. Yeah, okay, understood. So there are a lot of activity against these two buildings or lots where they've had usages through multiple decades as commercial.
Correct. And again, we're, the, the applicant is, is attempting to repurpose the building for what he thinks the highest and best use would be, um, based on demand in general. Uh, housing is obviously very needed, uh, and the, you, the, um, need for commercials, office spaces has diminished greatly. So instead of letting this building kind of languish empty, uh, he's trying to repurpose it so that it could be cosmetically beautified and really the center point of when you come down East Main Street and meet. So that's, that's why we're, we're here before you and the planning board, so that we could hopefully get to that point.
Thank you. Intention is to leave, intention is to leave retail on the main floor?
Correct.
And on the one side, and on the Main Street side where there is no retail at the moment, for that to retail or?
Correct. Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Let's see.
No.
One last time, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none and seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion that we close this hearing. Do I have a second?
AC, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for attending our meeting.
Thank you.
And, uh, we will, uh, doing work session now and, uh, reviewing the applications. Yes, congratulations again. Don't, don't think you're done paying for them, though. Don't think you're, no, I'm still paying, I'm still paying. Mine's out of, mine's out of the desk and I'm still, I'm still paying. Still paying. Yeah, I was just saying, I, I keep telling my daughter, you gotta get off the doll. She just, uh, 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 she doesn't. She came home from Mother's Day and somehow I, I like checked my card like a week and a half later. If I re-travel, I'm like, you come see me, and I'm paying for it. Let's do 305 and get that one done. The hard one. Hold on, okay. Well, he did make a point that, you know, it's the way that property line is and, you know, I'm just making a point. Right, that's
I don't feel that it needs to be.
Right, right, so this is
The fence that pulls out is four feet, which hides the HBAC.
Yeah, the condensers, yeah.
The condenser units are behind that.
Yeah.
These states that the gate, the gates themselves are 10 feet.
Yep, two five.
Which is why he's requiring the 14 feet.
Well, I think he's using it for the access for the lawn mower or whatever, I mean.
Nobody's got
Correct.
That was what my question was. Well, that's why he was describing the length when you, when you inquired.
Yeah.
And that's not, he was referencing the depth, he was referencing the depth and why he needed the depth to be able to maneuver around another vehicle. Well, that's fine, we understood that, but why 14 feet in width?
Because I think with, with, since the gates are there, if you end it like here.
What I would like to know
Yeah.
What I would like to know applicant seeks expansion construction approval, um, that would allow for the building permit to include construction of a proposed gravel driveway expansion of over 500 square feet. Additionally, over here in, in boldness, we have, uh, the new gravel expansion, and he did confirm that he is doing an asphalt driveway extending, and that does encroach onto the neighbor's property. He's claiming now that he pulled that back. Belgium block and pavers are considered structures. And so that really needs to be clarified, that that is not encroaching on the neighbor's property.
Well, that's, that would be the purpose of the survey.
That's a big thing. But you're, I mean, you're talking 500 square feet of, of paved surface.
600.
Six.
Five eight, it's about 14 by 42 is 588.
Yeah.
That's why I made that comment on the record.
So that's 600 square feet of paved space without any water management and, you know.
Well, he's saying that it's a hill down, so it doesn't need other management.
But technically, yeah.
But I think
So what's your, what's your opinion on this, Andy?
Well, I would like, if this goes forward and whatnot, it needs to certainly be looked at, because, you know.
Well
Well, we have a discrepancy between the application, or I don't know if it's a typo, but there is a discrepancy between what's being applied for versus what's on the survey and what he has clarified tonight to be a paved surface, not a permeable gravel, which
So this has to go to the planning board next, right? The planning, so Or dr- or drainage, or drainage.
Well, that's why I asked if he had a drainage plan, and he said, no, why would I do that?
Yeah, the question is, can you achieve your intended desire through a, a, a means that is least restrictive possible? That is the essence of this. I don't care about drainage, but the truth is, can you achieve this through another alternative method without exceeding the side yard, without over exceeding the five feet beyond the structural front found envelope? Is there an alternative method?
Well, you could, could you have, say this is four feet, and then you have five feet, that would be nine feet. But then I think it would look silly if you didn't go as much.
Can we pull this survey up so we can see it a little bit larger and clear? Or do we have it, do we have a copy of the survey there that I can look at, please?
The only survey we have is this one here.
Yeah, I was just, I can't read that.
Okay, right there.
Is it within five feet in total or either?
Right, you can't
Inside the foundation, so 10 feet in total, but
So I can, I can go five feet this way?
Thank you.
Right?
No, you can go like, oh, no, 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 you could actually go five feet.
Yeah.
Past the building.
Watch this. Yeah, I got that.
You can go five feet past this part.
I understand, but now what if I start going this, right, that way from the existing paved driveway? Yeah, keep going to the other point, the garage door. Where's the other end of the garage door?
It's, it's not part of the code.
It's
It's the foundation.
Okay, okay, my bad, hold on. Did I read, did I read that wrong?
For the door or foundation?
It's both. It's both.
Well, no, driveway has to, can't exceed the width of the garage door.
Any part
More than five feet.
But this side yard setback is a separate, correct?
Any part of the driveway which is located forward of the front of the foundation line of a dwelling and forward of the garage may not exceed the width of the garage door by five, by more than five feet and may not be located less than five feet.
It's the front foundation that I look at. Five feet here, five feet.
Okay, so the question is, doors are 20 feet wide.
Right.
All right, so the door is probably 16 feet wide.
Ah.
Yeah.
Interesting. Usually that's, that's standard sized, uh, for double garage, 16 feet, it's generally centered. We have a picture of the company?
Yeah, uh, you can't see it, though, the door blocks.
The car, the car, can we, um?
Yeah, but you can see the wall.
Can you pull up MapQuest and give us a look at him? You're just, he's so good.
Guys all worried, but I'm quiet.
These are typically eight foot wide doors, seven foot tall, they got about 12 inches between them.
Yeah.
They got 17 feet, so you can see this clearly. Almost two or three feet space there.
Right, and he's running into a side yard, he's running into a side, the other way, he's not running into a side yard problem, side setback.
Yeah.
He's running into a, beyond five feet of the frame.
Cheaper to go the other way.
Five feet, yeah, that's part of this variance, yeah.
I don't care, I don't care what it looks, that's what he wants. He wants to park another car, I just solve it for him without involving anybody else.
Wait, how did you, how did you solve, Kruskin, how did you solve this problem?
He's deciding to go in front of the house, not to
Show me, come on, Kruskin.
Yeah, he wants to go.
That's it, you know, you don't really need to be here. I mean, the barriers need nothing.
Well, you do, because it's still a driveway exceeding the width of garage doors. But what yours, what you're, you're suggesting does, he would need to come back for a variance, because the driveway would then exceed the width of the front doors.
You'd need, you need for, uh, let's put it this way, a travel lane is then is 11 feet. A parking stall is nine, nine by 20. So if he, if he went for three more feet, assume that's two feet on the, to the right of that, three feet would be what he's allowed. If he needed nine, he would need six, he would have variance for six more feet.
But now what if I give him something?
What if I give him, okay, let's
What if, what if we An additional proportion here?
Right.
And something here thereby minimizing the
No, but you, you're missing the point. If he, if you give him, say you give him five more feet, you give, he's got the, he's got the two on the left side, plus the threes he's allowed to, which he's entitled to under the code. He's allowed three, if you assume that between the
So your argument is that, um, this is the edge of the garage, it's two feet to the end, we'll just say two feet for the side of the argument. He's allowed three more feet. That's code before he needs a variance.
The driveway code.
Yes, right, so he can't park a car there because he didn't appear with these parts. So to give him what he would need, he would need another six feet, the same parking stall, nine by 20. So he's still gonna need six. But what if I widen this way? You can do that, but he still needs a variance because you got two feet plus the three you required. So if he, you only have
Yeah, well, yes. On your, on this side, you only need one to have a sidewalk.
Thank you very much with the chairman and the rest of the
Oh, Jesus.
Okay, so
I just think that the neighbors would like that either, is it would be just aesthetically?
Well, that's interesting, Tracy, go the other way or come closer to me, which one do you?
Cause that's a normal driveway, go along the edge.
Well Can you do me a favor and just give me, pay, show me the neighbors on either side of him? Just for the sake of argument.
You solved your drainage problem, your runoff problem, too close to you problem, a lot of problems. Use your land.
Let's see if anybody else has got a big driveway there.
Oh, look at, is that a walkway?
Go the one across
Go farther up and look across the street, please. Nope, flip, flip, keep turning to your right. Look at that, it's gravel pull-off area.
No, the other side, the other side behind the tree is a, it's a basketball.
Yeah, let me see it on the side of that truck. Yeah, go down.
On the white side of the truck is a, he's got it there, too.
Down turn. Look at that, zoom in on that white truck.
Oh, stop it.
You don't recognize that, sir? You don't recognize that logo?
That's not town of Brook
Is that Brook Avenue?
No, it looks like a landscape design. That's on a lift, that's, that's elevated enough, we're not gonna be able to evaluate.
Yeah, look, see?
Exhibit A.
You know, there's a reason why people don't like lawyers.
I don't like going
Why are you being so general with lawyers? We can just generalize it to him. This is why, this is why you drive people crazy.
Oh, come on.
Get you thinking.
That's true. Can I achieve this in another alternative means?
Well, technically, you did show that, because the guy across the street's got exactly what you said, even though it's a walkway.
It's still an additional pull-off area. That's why it's grade, it's graded to the exact height of the, um, the driveway, and it's gravel, it's not pavement.
Yeah, actually, pull up the GIS for a second. I wanna look historical images. I wanna see how many years the boat can park next in that spot.
Violating, violating code and boat parking in the front yard.
Sure, Sean's thinking, stayed on.
Show me twenty-three.
You haven't missed us?
Oh, I have, yes, I have. Some of, some of you, some of you. Alright, so let's see this, okay. Right.
Not there.
Listen, he was home on his lunch hour, give him a break, okay? He's had lunch too. So the pool is there now, right, he's putting a pool in. So. So Honorable, Honorable Antonio, what did, what did we discover? What did we discover?
Cause I torture people just as much.
Other than that you love GIS, what did we discover?
Are we exceeding the coverage on this lot?
What we just discovered is that he created this, this area. Within. Hit twenty, twenty-three? There it is, now it. Now it is, now it is a parking area. That's twenty-three, yeah, so he created this, this area.
Okay, so.
When you're on year map, you don't get the historical footage, you can't go twenty, twenty.
He's right on the neighbor's.
Well, he says now that he no longer encroaches over the neighbor's property, although we have no surveys that show that.
Let me show you something.
Cause right there, you see the green?
That's okay, just, whatever, that's fine.
So right now, his property line, this is the property line here.
Right.
So as it sits right now, his, this is on that, on the neighbor's property. And if you believe what he said, which I have no reason to believe, it's a knowledgeable guy, he put it on his own property, but uh, this, he moved this. So he's no longer on the neighbor's property now.
I loved the surveys from years ago.
If approved, if approved, it's a condition that it has to be proven that he did adjust the structures and they are no longer encroaching on the neighbor's property.
He showed me a photograph when I was four, and applying with that four-year-old photo for my license.
I'm gonna be honest with you, Antonio, I feel the same way.
I, I.
This should have been, this should, this should have been addressed, this should have been addressed before the application was noticed, but this is the burden that we've got.
Don't know what's on the ground.
Yes.
We have a survey that's seven years old.
Yeah, I know, it's like, look at me when I was ten.
Certainly would have been cuter then.
Well, I was definitely not as feisty.
I think your mother would beg to differ.
She gave you the last meeting, don't, don't call her back here. I don't know.
Now I know why you're in business for yourself.
Can't work for anybody.
Again, I, I respect and understand the aesthetic aspect of it, but it's not for us to be concerned with the aesthetics. I have a concern with the fact that it's the fourteen feet going for the elongated space that it is and, and the level of variances that are required. You know, just exceeding on every. Significantly, it's, it, to me, it's significant.
It's self-created.
Oh, there's that too.
And you could achieve it exactly.
And you can achieve it by a different method.
Not saying no, I'm just saying, let's look at it differently. Use your land.
This is the. I mean, you can, sorry, you can actually read. So he goes, what it is, is he goes to the post here, which is what gives him the fourteen feet. He's got a little bit of triangle of space there, but where this is the, the demon area and where he needs to come, he feels he needs this depth for the accessway for a vehicle to get around the sprinter vehicle.
But he doesn't necessarily have to have that vehicle parked.
Now we're getting into, well, it would, it would look silly, it would look silly if he did.
Well, no.
He's also got a two-car, he's also got a two-car garage and a driveway that manages four vehicles as it stands and he only has five vehicles. So to me, that's six-vehicle parking space already allotted to him, but.
Where's the side door for the apartment? Asked.
You did ask.
Can I access that?
You didn't realize what you were asking.
Oh, he understands what I was asking about.
So what do you say? So what do we, I mean, you wanna, you wanna survey, you wanna deny it?
He's coming back for the pool, right?
I would like to hold decision based on an updated survey. Uh, clarification of the surface and the.
Andy, can we request clarification on things now that the hearing is closed, or do we have to request the hearing be open? Okay.
Alright, so let's do those.
So, so Andy or Cindy, can we reach out to the applicant and ask him for an updated survey?
Your dimensions, so I think.
Yes.
Our discussions with the applicant. He indicated that I was, did not indicate on the right sides or the value of it at all, but um. When we discussed the updated survey, the applicant had asked if um, he could wait on that because he's gonna need to provide an updated survey for his pool. So he was hoping he could provide one updated survey for both his pool, which is pending, and this application. So if the board is of a mind to request the survey, I would imagine the applicant is gonna either by letter or come back to the board and request that be postponed.
He indicated that that's what the point was, but correct me if I'm wrong, he can apply for, he can uh, create a new survey and then just have that new survey, have the pool drawn in and get a re-guarantee at a discounted value. It's not as though he's applying for, to get two surveys done completely. A good surveyor will give him the initial survey with, as the, as the plot sits now and then they will make an amended, uh, re-guarantee to the survey with the adjustments when the pool is installed.
Alright, so Andy, here's the.
Agreed, and that's what you're looking at tonight, the survey you have before you is an amended survey.
Uh, it's not re-surveyed, it says on it clearly, in seven years, it has not been re-surveyed.
For eighteen, twenty, twenty-five, it's redated, survey not updated.
Yeah. So Andy, with the board wants, is going to want an updated survey showing showing the new, the changes, cause again, it appears he's on the property line, you know, he claims and we want, and what was the other one? You want, you want the uh.
I just want the, I just want the application to be clear as to what he's looking to do. It, it states everywhere that it's a gravel expansion and he's indicating that he is making a paved expansion, which to me is, and along with the Belgian block, by most municipal standards, those are considered structures. And right now, the survey shows it goes over onto the neighbor's property, um, and we're we're putting structures, we're looking.
That's the overhead, um, that's the overhead.
Utility lines.
Is there a fire hydrant out there?
What, do you have something against dogs? Are you using fire hydrants now or what?
The second item is clarification for the service material on the driveway.
Yeah, and updating our, you know, cause the application clearly says gravel.
And this is existing.
Well.
In form.
He created it.
He, we have, he, he's, he's applying for, and I'm sorry, not a please, this isn't something that he's looking to. Looking for forgiveness, correct? In, in something that we've seen based on the GIS viewing that was created within the last two years. Or two years ago, we're in twenty twenty-five and the twenty-three shows that he created this little area.
And.
It didn't seem like it's a neighbor's issue.
No, their, their neighbors, the, the issue, neighbors had nothing to do with this application, it was, it had to do with.
Tree clearing, tree clearing. It had to do with tree clearing and revegetation, which has been stated and clarified that by building that was.
A violation was issued, a permit, and then the permit was issued for the tree clearing, uh, which included revegetation and the permit was closed based on inspection by our staff.
What's the dormer he was talking about?
The permits for that.
Did he put a dorm, a dormer on?
It's like in the back over there with the panels on.
Yeah. Alright, let's hold this open till we get those clarifications. Are you busy at the next meeting?
Me?
Yeah.
I don't even know what I'm doing in the next hour, I got hundreds of documents to do.
Alright. Four fifteen, four seventeen.
Oh, do we need a motion to hold it off?
Well, no, we're just, we don't have to make it. Yeah, we're not gonna make a decision.
Give that to Cindy, please, so she can put it back in the file.
And just for the record, it's a type-two action under secret, Cindy? It's just a type-two action under secret, that's all. I don't have to run on it, yeah.
Do you disagree with that and having him clarify?
No, not at all.
Before we make.
We shouldn't, honestly, I said it the other day, we shouldn't have heard this hearing, but they, and I also, I, just so you guys know, I also had um, I also had Dan reach out to him and say, hey, listen, you know, you're over the property line, do you wanna hold open the hearing, or do you want us to, we'll cancel the hearing and just, we'll pay for the re-notification if you can get an updated survey. Um, the guy told Dan he wanted to come and he had moved the Belgian block, but you know, he still have to, you know, your word, although.
How far is he saying he moved the Belgian block?
He didn't say.
Nothing was indicated. It just, hey, hey, take my word, I scooted these.
He went the other way.
Yeah.
He moved it.
Don't listen to him, don't listen to him.
He scooched it.
He didn't ask me which way, I moved it that way.
Listen, Antonio, we're gonna pretend like you're Floyd, you only speak when spoken to.
I'll show you the photo if you wanna see what I looked like.
Oh, thank you.
Like the survey from last month.
Alright, so.
I don't mind him moving over.
Nah, just. I hate to admit it, but Antonio's right, he could, he could go the other way like the neighbor did and.
There is no, at the, at where, what's proposed at this point, the fourteen feet, I just, I mean, it's substantial. It's substantial in, in.
And it's on the record, I said it on the record.
Thank you, I, I appreciate that, it makes my heart, it's only five years for you to give me that knowledge of that. So, but.
Okay, that's sunny boy.
But I just love when I make a thing on the record and all applicants look at me go, why would I do that? Why would I get the legal services?
Well, you could park, you, you could park a vehicle.
They made a gravel, a grade-level gravel area.
Go back to the area for a second.
In front of the, that it just made an additional parking space and gravel in front of, into the front of the house.
If you look at this here, this here is all pins. This is what Antonio is talking about, this here.
Correct, but they did it.
They call it a walkway. Not pure, it's not asphalt, so technically you can make the argument that.
Right.
It could be garden space with a gravel. But that fits a vehicle very easily or two, so when you have a party, you've got plenty of room to park five vehicles. And this, this applicant already has room to park six vehicles, including his garage, and he's claiming he needs room for five. And that's why he needs fourteen feet and encroaching onto the neighbor's property.
And if he puts it on the other side and does block, he calls it a walkway.
Luxury problems there we have, where we have to put Belgian block on our neighbor's property to get. Alright, next applicant, let's do this.
Alright, four fifteen, four seventeen. Antonio, you, you still pull your airtime tonight.
Can we have oxygen pump back in the room, please?
Before we say, before we say anything, Tom, come on over for a second, cause I'm gonna have you say a few things that. Um. So, um, talk to us about the merits of this app, the merits of this application, similar to what you told me earlier about thinking that it was a good move or, or. Four fifteen, four seventeen, yes.
As, as an architect and, and what goes on with these communities, this is, you have, I won't say a blighted building, but you've had a vacant building here for a long time. This is kind of a portal to the downtown area. Be nice to see it revitalized to some degree. It's housing issues on Long Island. It's a, it, it, it's a good project in terms of, you know, you're a TOD.
And we're looking at it glob, I'm just looking at it globally right now, not the, not the.
We have a train station that's not too far away, you know, so in regards to, you know, commuter and things like that, um, it's kind of ideal. They're creating modest apartments here that look to be more affordable than a lot of these other developments are doing. I, I think it's a um, asset to the, uh, to, to the Village of Port Jefferson, having, and the ability to have these smaller, bigger, smaller family, a family just starting out. Retiree that wants to be able to walk downtown.
We have thirty-six available rentals in the Village of Port Jefferson right now, they can move into any one of those currently.
Again, these are smaller and I think gonna be more affordable based upon the square footage and the size, I see they're one bedroom, one bath.
Fairfield would beg to differ.
And Andy, you, you substantially agree with what Tom said? Okay. Okay.
I don't know what the total number of apartments are in the downtown, I'm not sure what percent they can see you have, seeing those apartments, but I think that this is a, a product that's different than any other products downtown. And historically, they have been occupied and if you make them more legal, they will likely be are.
What's current, well, currently existing in there is office space, correct?
I think it was retail O one-one or was it all?
No, all lower level is.
Fame and rebel, I think fame and rebel.
And then he had a photography place on the first floor, there was a personal use.
When you, Mark, when you introduced this application, you, you, it said something about historic district or something.
Historic downtown, yes, it's in, it's in the agenda, that's how the.
Is that just, you just refer, is that just a colorful word, or is it technically a historic?
It's not landlord, it's not.
Okay, okay.
It just, I'm just telling you, I just read what was in the description, that's all. So, I personally think this application, even if we would approve it right now, would be back in front of us six months, a year from now, because I think.
Based on what I've seen, they got hurt, there's a lot of hurts, you know, and it's not just the variances that you guys look at. Between planning then ultimately getting building permits, you know, plans are at a stage where a lot of things have not been vetted out.
Yeah, but you have to understand that you are affecting irrespective of what actually occurs after that point. You have, that runs with that lot. Okay, and you now have attached that to that lot.
I'm not.
My concern is not with that lot, my concern is setting the precedence of apartments fronting on Main Street and East Main Street. And we are looking to make an adjustment on that as the code currently stands.
What is your, what is your, what is your objection to apartments on Main Street, East Main Street?
Um, lack of, of functionality, lack of parking, um.
All of which may come back in front of us and.
The idea of, um. There, yeah, there's. There's a reason why the code was set, um, in regards to the A, the character of the village, the use of the village. And, and I get that the use is changing, I mean, I'm a real estate agent who manages housing for people, so I fully understand the aspect of that, but I, I think it's, it we're looking to waive a significant village code here, um, and I do agree, it is. And I do agree, it is a gateway to the village and it is, you know, one of the, one of the first buildings as you hit the condensed C-one district, and, and I get that they need to improve it as far as its aesthetics are concerned. But what they are proposing, where the usage of this lot, the lack of the parking, um, I think there's a lot of things to take into consideration here.
Now, if you take, if you take what Amy said with the grand assault, it's a less intensification for parking, I don't believe that. I don't believe that, I'm just saying it.
What's the proposed approval for their, their, the application is, well, the proposed application will be how many apartments? They said six? Seven.
The fourteen part, oh.
One to two people per unit, that's fourteen, not including. One to two people per unit, that's fourteen, not including the retail spaces?
Right. No, I don't, and now they're, they're making claims that there's legacy rights that they have, which I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it's valid or not valid, I'm just, I think they're back in front of us, so that they're either doing piling, pileup, or parking reduction, parking stall reduction, but, but I don't-
But we're not looking at parking, that's part of this.
No, 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 we're just, you're talking with-
But it's gotta be-
I think-
OTR issue?
So, so you think, so you think that setting the precedent of apartments fronting on Main Street, which someone recently at this table said to me, oh, aren't there apartments already fronting on Main Street? Your, your issue is with legal apartments fronting on Main Street. And you're worried about the precedent that's gonna set? Oh, I'm sorry.
Culinary school on the bottom, six dorm rooms above, teach them how to cook, across the street.
Uh, I'll give you a little advice, don't open a culinary, we're closing ours in the college.
That's a great idea right there. Open a culinary school on the bottom.
It's funny, because Floyd Academy or the William Floyd School District, that does the teaching classes, the cooking classes, they got a bunch of them.
They had a bunch of them, we don't get enough to support ours, we have the whole building in Mirbet, anyway.
It's a shame.
Yeah, it is. So, your, your concern is, which is, I, you know, I always go back to precedent and setting the precedent, so your concern is setting precedent? Interesting. What about the FAR, you have an issue with the FAR?
I do, but I was focusing on the other part first.
That's fine, I'm just-
What's the orange showing?
I mean, it's not as significant, the FAR based on the existing building, the, the, I believe that that a little addition that they need is because they're enclosing that upper area on the second floor. But if I remember the application discussion from last time, when we go from, um, FAR of two, and the district is two point two, it was because of that enclosure, correct?
That was part of it, as well as the stair.
Who owns the other part of that parking lot? You have to cross this other person's land.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
There's, there's an easement, right Andy?
There has to be.
Yeah, there's an easement in the area that-
Those spots are actually not even accessible.
That's why the owner of that building and their legal representation came to the last meeting, expressing extreme concern in regards to, A, the proposed tenants and occupants of this building utilizing their parking space, but additionally, the staging of the construction materials and equipment would be on their property in order to complete this project, because we cannot have that on Main Street or East Main Street.
I understand that. It's gonna be any, and that's more foreseeable than, because that's a foreseeable situation, it's unforeseeable who's, who's coming and going at any random time, in and out of this thing, to get to that building. You know, that's interesting. And, so there's gotta be some, there's some reciprocal easement here. I don't know.
Well, again, that's not-
Yeah, but there's, there's the access. Yeah. Like, how, like, like, take a look for the church.
If this is reflective of that, right, this is this lot, right, you leave one, that's two, right?
Right.
Again, of serious significance is the pre-standing apartment shall not, is to be constructed on having a minimum of forty thousand square feet, and this only has shy of six. It's not even six, and it's combined of two lots.
Yeah, no, I hear.
Don't know the issue.
That they, they, they kind of separated that with the building off of East Main. Because those two brothers or something like that.
I don't get me in a fight.
That had to have been one whole, not at one time.
That was just recently, but that-
No, we're saying holistically, the whole thing had to be one post, not a-
No.
Who would've? Whoa, who was sitting down on the path that day?
So, stance clarification then? You know what I mean? If the CDA is considered the character of the neighborhood, but it's my understanding that improving these dwellings on East Main Street and on second story on East Main Street and Main Street would be precedent-setting for any new development that comes into the C-one district, which would include the Mariner Building, which would include any redevelopment of any of the buildings down there, would more be concerned about precedent-setting second-story apartments, new second-story apartments in the downtown.
Yes.
So, you rule then that this application does change the character, or has the potential to change the character of the downtown?
Yes, significantly.
What if it was a four-story hotel?
Can you, can you stop with that?
That?
If I hold them, you hit them?
I, I'm right there, I'm okay with it. I mean-
I mean, we have a lot of lifts to get past, we, you just brought up the forty thousand square feet, and that's combined two lots.
We're talking a combined two lots of five thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine point six square feet, and that's what they have in two, and it should be forty. Again, substantial.
It's not a residential. That is not a residential.
Well, the fact that it's called C-one, commercial, it's-
I mean, the square, the, the, the far, I don't have an issue with, I mean, it's, it is what it is, it's minimal, and we know what they're enclosing, it's mostly because of the staircase for security purpose, or egress issues, and that's, to me, that's not, that's not substantial, um, but two fifty eighteen is
Yeah.
Issue one and two, to me, are substantial.
How many floors do I wanna do, three?
Nineteen seventy-six, retail, eighty-four.
Be surprised if they did.
With three floors, man, or only two floors?
It's three.
Three floors, yeah.
There are three floors existing, there's two build, there's supposed to be two separate buildings that have illegally been combined and accessed through way.
It's in the basement.
That's where the parking garage is going.
That's what I'm looking at right now. Yep, it's gonna go right under there, except we're gonna need an easement from my buddy next door.
You give me, you give me a payload or a concrete guy in, uh, six weeks, yeah, six weeks, and I, give me enough money, I can get you anything you want. Eight feet to water, I can clear, yeah, be close, but I'll make, you know, couple of feet dead men and get it in.
You're better off shifting this whole building.
Oh, my god.
We're not shifting buildings, go away.
Here we go.
Closing this to this, you have your entrance here, you have your hotel valet.
Junior. Junior, junior, sit down, junior. Yeah, yeah, junior, 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 sit down. Alright, so what's the board wanna, you wanna, you wanna vote, you wanna, wanna hold it open, we got, we now have sixty-two days to make a decision.
We even know who owns these two buildings?
Yes, they have been inherited by the applicant, and he is a recent owner of, uh, both buildings and lots. Still within the same familial line, but, uh, considered new owner.
So, what's the board's thinking? Why did you do that?
Because
Well, here it goes.
We questioned it. She laughed. Why would I do that?
What are we talking, we still talking about this, oh, right.
Yeah, get me a single and separate, why? Because, just because you say that a corporation has a common denominator between two things, does not mean that you have a common ownership. That's like- Yeah, but, but I don't, but we have to start questioning standing from the get-go.
Well, well, hold on, hold on, I don't mean to be jerked, but you, you're, you're outside the bounds of our-
Well, but this application may be nullity, that's the thing.
Yeah, but, I understand you're a lawyer, but we're not, yes, it does, um, but where that's outside our bounds, we have to stay within the scope of our authority. If you wanna, if you wanna go through these and play that, then have Andy hire you, and you can-
But how do you know that you're not affecting somebody else's rights? If they just say they own it?
Yeah, but that's not, that's not within our purview.
So, you say just because they signed an affidavit saying they swear that this true, that, that's what that is?
No, the owners of the properties have sworn that they are allowing this applicant to the phone.
Okay, and those, and those are LLCs that these deeds are in? So, I guess we got the articles from them, upon submission, articles, all those things.
But it's not our job to vet the application, it's our job to vet the requested variances. You're, yeah, you're, you're going down a rabbit hole that's-
You don't think that's procedurally important?
Yeah, but, if, yeah, but, but if Andy, if, but if Andy tells me, if Andy tells me the application-
So, you don't feel the lot area variance based on existing condition is considered to be substantial?
I see your point.
I see your point, you know, what is it, thirteen thousand they have? Probably didn't change, but how many is zero?
For what? A lot?
You need forty thousand, and then what do they have?
Six, less than six.
Did two last combined?
Yes. Yes, so I would disagree with some of these statements that are made here in a staff report, I like-
I agree. Absolutely agree.
Wait, what was that, what'd you just say?
It was noted that it, it, the variance based on existing conditions is not considered to be substantial, and we're talking less than six, and required is forty, that's substantial.
It's substantial, but it is an existing condition.
Right, but that, that's not the, it-
But where, but where, this isn't, it's not for, but it's not based on, this application is not based on existing usage, it's based on a new application for new-
Yeah.
And, and listen, that's not a fatal, that's not a fatal flaw, either.
It's not, in comparison, in, right, so in your next-
But I agree with- Yeah, a hundred percent.
Look, so, look at all that stuff, wow, look at all that. Mark, his application's bothering him.
No, it does not adversely affect the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood, no, 'cause that's already, it is what it is as far as that is concerned.
There's a gentleman's agreement that's been existed-
Is it self-created? Yeah, I mean, you can make the argument, self-created.
Yep, that's noted, and-
Because you're asking for, you're asking for residential, we're in a commercial district, so you can say that it's-
It is.
But you're not allowed, but you're, you're not allowed to front on Main Street or East Main Street. That's a self, you know, and and prior, and the existing was, the existing was all retail.
Office, office, retail, personal use.
Yeah, it all.
It's, it, it's had a little bit of everything.
Yes, the building has survived.
What's your position, Mr. Chairman?
Um, you know, the, the issue that I have is, you know, I mean, I'm on the fence, to be honest with you, 'cause I think the application is a good application, but I always go back to, anything you do sets a precedent, and Main, Main Street, the, you know, and, yeah, I've said that in the past, and you brought it up now, and it, you know, resonated with me that it's, you know, you're gonna set a precedent, and that will change the character, I mean, I know you can make the argument that someone made previous, that there are apartments on Main Street, you know, not legal, but, you know.
But that's the problem, is that they're not.
Right, and if those came in front of us to legalize, doesn't mean we would approve them.
I don't know every apartment in downtown, but not, I can tell you that buildings is probably pretty existing, maybe, maybe not, uh-
It's outside your scope, that's outside your scope.
A lot of the buildings on East Main Street have apartments-
See? Double standard, it's outside your scope, that doesn't matter, you need to look at the application-
We're talking about the character of the neighborhood.
I don't care if it's legal or not.
Oh, man.
Can't make a double-sided argument. It don't work. Who cares if it's legal or not, the fact is, what are they doing? Who cares? Outside your scope, you have no rights to talk.
But those apartments, they did, they're a big, but the apartments, it's originally a boarding house, and then they changed it.
Doesn't matter. Missing evidence of ownership, the tax number zero, two, look at this.
So, it's not really impressive there.
Cindy, you asked the people a hundred times if they own this building, I can't believe how many times you asked them. Look at this. Six years you asked them.
So, I'm not sure that it's impressive. You know, because of-
Um, no, I mean, are there, you know, the art gallery and the yogurt shop, and, I mean, you can run down the line, and there are some that are there. I don't know whether or not they're legal, or if they have COs, I personally have not looked into their files. No, not all of them.
But buildings you actually get to from the block, you are-
There are-
The one over, there's-
The one, the amazing Olive, I think, has a, or, near that area, I think there's one of them.
I, I mean, for a period of time, I, as a kid, I lived in an apartment in the village that has, um, that fronted on Main Street, the access was, was from Main Street, um, above Dunkin' Donuts, there's a two-bedroom, my mother lived there for-
And that fronts over Main Street.
And that, there's, well, there's, it does front on Main Street, and there is a backdoor access, but there's an apartment that's there, that is legal and full CO'd, and meets fire code egress, so, the, it, so, yes, so now I'm, I'm contradicting myself, that there are these apartments that the precedence has been set, but for-
Yeah, but is that three stories, or, I mean, at Dunkin' Donuts?
No, it's two.
Billy's is three stories.
Billy's is three stories.
What are you saying over there? It does, but it doesn't front on Main Street, it fronts on the alleyway.
The door does, but the precedence, what's the precedence to front on Main Street? Let's say the door has to front on Main Street.
With the legal, the legal address is Main Street of that building, is that not? It's two oh, two oh two Main Street, and, I, who may?
Yeah. You said the legal, you wouldn't say legal.
Sorry, yeah. Trying to remember.
But I'm even saying that even there are apartments there that aren't facing Main Street, doorway on Main Street, legal, these three stories.
So, the existing character of the area is mixed-use apartments on second floors, the precedent that you are talking about, those new apartments, and I would just say that a lot of these buildings were targeted for renovation to bring them up to new apartment standards, and if you set that precedent, it would be all those renovations to bring these apartments up to more modern standards.
You also but you also don't want it to be, the patchwork started out nice, and it's like walking.
These buildings aren't changing, you know, that-
Well, he, we're, he's not adding a story, he's utilizing what's existing. So, there's that to be said on the applicant's behalf, that we, he's not asking to add a story to the building, the only thing that they're adding is a minimal amount of, of FAR based on egress, they're, they're building over something that's existing, that's what brings them from the two-point-oh to the two-point-two. It's because of that, um, enclosed staircase off the rear of the building that's required, and there's a little aesthetic part that was in front of the building that they were looking to, windows and whatever, that they were gonna be retrofitting, um, and that's what, that's what brought that, in the need of that variance. Um, and that's what, that's what brought that, in the need of that variance. And Andy has a very good point.
What's the next thing?
Andy has a very good point in regards to the regency and what's there. Counselor?
Not me. Outside of scope. This is very simple, it's about use. It's all it's about. It's about use. It's usage. I don't care how it looks, it's the use.
He's saying it's the change of use, that's the problem.
Guys. Want to go to architecture, go do architecture, it's the use.
Alright, so.
It is not permissible use in the zone. That's why they.
Why is it a not?
Which we've already established, there are. A substantial amount of.
So then it's about frontage. The use of, well, yeah, it is about use, isn't it? So then what is it? It's because they're apartments of that front? That's very specific. You are taking a very specific, that that why would they?
We are not, somebody else did at some point.
And what does it mean to front?
And I think it was.
When I, I thought it meant having a doorway on Main Street. Andy said, no, it's just having the apartments.
Right, i.e. the regency.
That's interesting.
When you look at it like in a zoning term, like you have a property that has two front, two streets, they're both, you know, it's not, the door is on one side to the house, but the other side.
Well, we go, we go over this in real estate all the time, when you have a house that front has two front yards based on the street access point, right? We go through, but I live this this world in in the Village of Belterra regularly with my clients when they're going for variances up there. And for pools, because they thirty percent of Belterra properties front on two streets. Oh, they they go street to street, they go front to front.
Yeah, we've had a few, we've also had ones on corners.
It's consider, so that would be.
But again, it is about use, because if they weren't for the purpose of residential, then it, then this doesn't matter.
This wouldn't be an issue, on, not only, if it was on Arden somewhere, then it doesn't front. In the same zone, we wouldn't, then that variance wouldn't be in front of us, cuz it wouldn't front on. But because this fronts on East Main and or Main.
Actually, in all fairness, Mariner's Way, I have a three story building with a legal apartments on the second and third floor. And this probably didn't come up for them because they didn't front on Main Street, it's on parking lots in Mariner's Way. Behind Fifth Season.
Slowly getting you guys to. So, two major streets, two major streets in this village, the two, the most, actually, one of the most important intersection points.
I would argue that.
Yes, Mrs. Corcella, is that not what she stood up and had a point about in the last meeting? Sunday dinner has been very interesting with you and your mother. I believe that was her point. Yep, circling back again.
I think there's more on this than to, I don't think thirty, holding thirty days is going to. I think we wrote on this the next meeting, I think there's some.
What, yeah, what is, what do you mean?
No, I'm just saying, you know, just sit, you know, I mean, we can vote on it tonight, but I mean.
So do we all agree that the the first one?
Not substantial.
I don't even know what building we're gonna, about to affect if we pass over tonight, what building is being affected? Well, no, no, they haven't done that, so by making a vote today, what building are you affecting?
Conditional upon the merging of the buildings and the lots.
The approval is conditional on merging.
So that's a very, now, now what is the approval process of that?
They said that they wouldn't go for that.
They have to go for that, they've already merged the buildings, they, because they've gone on record and clearly stated that there is excessive points between the buildings.
They haven't, they haven't done the form.
That doesn't exist, you're passing a device that doesn't exist. Or the, or the other way to say it is, get it done and then come back and ask us for exactly what you want against the building that stands today legally.
So what is, so this is, that wouldn't happen in sixty two days, we have sixty two days to make a decision, sixty two, right?
So we would have to deny this initial application and they would have to complete that process and then reapply.
Commit, commit.
Well, and let me ask you this, and would the, because you cannot come in for the same thing technically on the same lot. Is your argument that the first application was two separate lots, which they didn't apply for? Or would, what what was your?
It would be a new application, it would have to be.
But you can't, like, they can't ask for these three variances when we've denied them, and you know, what what would be the? What would be the reason why they, what would be the, what's different from then to now?
Ripeness, you're not ripe to review, you don't stand as ripe. You have preliminary, pre-procedural-ish threshold issues, you do not have standing, you're not ripe. That's right, you don't play.
Yeah, but they didn't merge them until when?
Prior to going for. Yeah, even even before you even get here, before you.
So Andy, if we, if we deny this application based on the, them not merging, having the lots merged already. Just, just speaking out loud, and then they merged the lots, is it a different application? And could we rehear it with these three variants? Right, right, but I know that, I know just because you get rejected, you can't just keep coming in and filing for the same variances. You have to, every time you come in, you have to have a change of circumstance like.
But that's a major change of circumstance.
Don't they, don't they legally have to because they have merged the buildings?
Well, it's a vacant building, it was in use right now, obviously, there'd be some issue, but yes, that needs to be, what we call legalized.
Well, it's not a vacant building, the retail spaces on the first floor are occupied and they have permits pertaining to that. Uh, isn't there something currently on the, um, on the, on the west side, west side retail?
Commit and comply. Where's the other owner? Hey, where's the other owner? See the problem?
No.
I don't know, nobody wants to look at, but what, where, where, and why was the application filed under both lots? They don't realize that this is two different lots here, they say, sir, please go back and amend your application, you're affecting two lots. Thanks for coming in, see you next month. And a new survey while you're.
Say that again, Cindy. Correct, correct, okay.
Like they said, make a decision and make a contingent.
Or you didn't say commit, commit and come back. Commit to the plan.
Because if they, if they, if we didn't give them permission for this, would they then somehow?
Well, they said to you, if we don't get that, we're not merging.
Illegal, illegally.
Refresh my memory, they came here, they came here. Eight weeks ago. What was the condition that they needed to reappear, refresh me, what? We did, or they did, we did. And how the COs were issued and how their application was. So we looked at those things, we've now clearly determined that they are in fact two separate deeds and two separate lots. And didn't we then say if that was the case that they needed to amend their application to reflect the two separate buildings? Or no, we, it was, was it determined by staff that it was okay for them to come in with this one application?
See, it's funny, they could be separate, when they wanna be separate, separate, they're separate, they're super separate now, but when we're not, when we wanna be together, we're together.
Well, they're separate for tax purposes, because once they merge and they and they yield square footage, you're you're increasing a tax bill substantially.
Yeah, but if they're owned by the same.
Tracy, what's your position on this, you're rel, you're you're unusually quiet and and I'll nate, I'll nate the.
My opinion is, is we could. Kick the application and do a contingent, make a decision contingent on them. I think that they probably proven that they do own both lots.
We know that they own both lots, we know, we know quite clearly, it's the same individual who owns these.
Issue with that, I don't have an issue with it, that. That we could either.
Where's this owner's endorsement of the neighbor?
I think you could make a decision contingent on them merging the lot, which is what they wanted. To me, it seems like that's what happens.
Alright, so here's, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna move forward on these applications, we're gonna walk through the five criteria. Cindy, we're gonna walk through the five criteria on this, so. Floor area ratio, two, and two point two is requested, two is required, two, two point two is requested. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible by the applicant. Yeah, oh, cool.
Laminated. I know, we all need one.
I may have got beaten up in high school, but I always.
Couldn't beat disclosing that on the record, Mark.
Yeah, I don't think that was a secret. So whether the benefit was G by other means feasible by the applicant. I, I think the, you know, I I I don't think it's substantial enough for the, you know, the applicant to change. I think we, I think looking at the four plans, and Tom said it earlier, I think there's gonna be a lot of change to the floor plans, that's gonna affect us even more. Um, bathroom sizes, um, access point, so.
Based on the current proposal and the and the design that was submitted, this is, again, the the point two. Is really comes down based to the enclosure of the staircase and the egress and that little front area.
Right, it's not really, it's not really living. Uh, undesirable change in the neighborhood's character or to the nearby properties, just for the FAR, we're not talking about the fronting on Main Street right now. I don't think the point two is going, adding those stairs, you need them for egress anyway. Whether the request is substantial, point two on two is minimal. Uh, adverse physical environmental impacts, no. Whether allegedly difficult is self-created, I don't even think it's self-created, cuz you need the stairs to meet the fire code. So I can't even, I think it's more code driven, so. Um, that being said, um, I'll make a motion that we. Approve the floor area ratio of two point two, where two is required, contingent on them merging the lots. All in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I could, I could abstain, yes. Yeah, abstain.
Tracy, are you voting in favor? With one abstention. A lot of which proposed freestanding apartments to be constructed shall have a minimal, minimum of forty thousand square feet where. And right now, they currently have five thousand eight hundred and eighty nine point six square feet. Whether the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means, it's an, it's pre-existing lots, so I don't think the applicant, you know, it's not like he. Um, made the lots or had anything to do with to construct, they were pre-existing, so. Um, undesirable change in the neighborhood, the character nearby. You, you could make an argument that it, it, you know, building any, building a three story on six thousand square feet.
No, we're still discussing the.
Well, the benefit of the, let's start with, benefit be achieved by a applicant, um, I think the pre-existing lots, so I don't think.
Well, it's a pre-existing lot with a pre-existing building. That is already. Improved to.
Tearing down the building, he's not, you know, he's using the existing footprint of the building other than adding the staircase.
It's a pre-existing three story building?
Yes. So whether a undesirable change in neighborhood, you can make an argument that it would, you know, I mean, you're you're going from a office use right now to a residential use. You know.
Not about that, it's about frontage.
We're not talking about that right now, we're talking about lot size. Right, but he's changing the use of it.
Changing the use.
Right, cuz. Cuz right now, it's all office re, uh, and retail, right, and.
Articulate, thank you, articulate clearly, Antonio. It's the change of use.
And to Tracy's point, you're not changing the building.
You're not changing the building, then isn't that what that's talking about, the size of the building?
We're talking about the area, yes, cuz we are talking.
It's not used, that would come in more with the next one.
Well.
Under the current, under, Andy, under the current setup, do we need it, uh, the, they were talking about the lot size? Um, if it was just to stay the way it is now, would, it wouldn't need a variance, right, for the lot size, or would it need a lot?
It's only for apartment buildings, which this change of use then applies to this building, because as it stands now, the building conforms to village code. For its current use based on square footage. But because they, they're looking to change their use, it no longer conforms? But because they, they're looking to change their use, it no longer conforms?
The uses, uses allowed. Apartments are allowed. Except, not on the, uh, front of Main Street, East Main Street, apartments are allowed in mixed-use buildings.
Right, but what's kicking off this?
What's kicking off the variance application is the fact that they're F R in place. Even area variance, right, F R.
No, uh, two fifty dash eighteen F four C one, a lot which any proposed freestanding apartment is to be constructed shall have a minimum of forty thousand square feet, five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine point six square feet is requested.
So the question is, under the current, where, as it sits right now, professional use, whatever it's being used as, does, would it require a variance if it came in front? No, it's only because that the, we're adding the apartment portion to it.
That it's the cha, this is Antonio's, this is why Antonio has such a problem, is because this applies because it is a change of use, it now no longer conforms because of the change of loo, use and the squ, the square footage is then substantial.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's not substantial, I'm also saying that it, it will have an undesirable change in the neighborhood because you're purposely in a commercial district, it's called the C one district, I understand there are apartments here, but the building next to it, you know, and, you know, don't ha, you know, you have a church behind it, or I believe you have a church behind.
Church, yeah.
Yeah, church behind it, I, I mean, I, it's my opinion that it would have an undesirable change.
But the building is the building, right?
Right.
And they're not changing the square footage of the building.
Right. But.
And he's allowed to already have apartments in there.
No, he's not. He does not have permitted use for apartments, he only, no. You can have apartments, but this building is not permitted for apartments. This building is currently built and designed conforming to C one commercial and retail space and office space. So we are now changing the use of the building to where it no longer conforms to. Listen, I understand your point and I support your point, but, you know, where it pertained to the FAR, it, it, that has a nothing. This particular code, this is, this is where it changes because they're looking for the change of use. And it's considered new apartments, therefore the building needs to comply with new code in wit, or not comply with the code because it is a new use, it's a new use.
New use.
And now we have created, they have created a substantial, what is deemed to be substantial lack of, of, of required square footage.
So on the third one being whether the request is substantial, I think, don't think there's an argument, you know, six thousand where forty is required, we can all agree it's substantial. Sure, go ahead. Hold on.
Yes.
谈到, uh, mixed occupancies and freestanding apartments, but go down to four, it says, there's nothing else above that, it says, any proposed new apartment shall be subject to conditioning, you said, the application to the planning board. And shall satisfy the following conditions, A is parking, B is parking, and C. Proposed freestanding apartment buildings must also comply with the following. It's not a freestanding building. Bottom which any proposed freestanding apartment is to be constructed shall have a minimum of forty thousand square feet. It's not a freestanding apartment.
Why is?
Why is it not a freestanding building?
I understand, very good point.
Okay.
Okay.
Then two, C two says shall be constructed only on that portion of the street, which is not front by Main Street and East Main Street. Um, so there's an interpretation. New, and then D says new apartments in this subdivision shall not include renovated with inverted space, existing building with a proposed renovation of the version does not increase the total square footage of the building, in this case.
But then, hold, hold on, hold on, wait, back up for, that's what I'm going.
Yeah, why?
The variance that's in front of us is a lot on which any proposed freestanding apartment, which you just said it wasn't, is to be cons, uh, is to be constructed, shall have a minimum of forty thousand square feet, and right now we have fifty-eight eighty-nine. So you just said it's not a freestanding apartment, so then.
It is.
Then why are we hearing that variance?
Because it all goes back to what do they put in their petition to us? What are they petitioning for? The use of what?
Alright, so then let's, let's, you know, I think then.
What is that?
Right.
What is that, Tom?
Sure, then we have to check, check back. You know, put the notes, um, when the person prepared this, um, but as I recall, I think there were eleven apartments and they were all apartments, and that's why it was considered a freestanding apartment. And they came back and changed it to end the retail.
But not during our process, they did that prior to us.
I, I don't know the time of that.
So you're talking, this application was originally proposed to not have retail space on the first floor, but to do an entirety change of use for the entire space.
Oh, good.
And then.
Freestanding apartment shall be.
Yeah, okay, so it was originally, yeah.
Application's.
This is dated February two thousand.
Wait a minute. Portion of the, what, I can't read. District which does not front on Main Street or East Main Street.
Construction on Main Street requested.
Those freestanding apartments shall be constructed only on that portion of the di, of, so they were going to what, then create an apartment building in the back?
Portion, yeah.
Read, read the, the area variance that they're looking for, and is that this two fifty eighteen F four C two?
We're saying it's a freestanding apartment, that's what it is, freestanding apartment, which means the whole entire use of this whole building is an apartment, period, next. And for the portion that is fronting Main Street and East Main, we're not gonna have living there. They took frontage to mean access.
Yeah.
They took frontage to mean.
Alright, hold on, hold on, we gotta back up, we gotta.
Proposed freestanding apartment shall be constructed only on that portion of the district which does not front on Main Street, so they're talking about the, no. So if you look at the building, they are talking about making apartments on the back portion of it, which doesn't front, and then, uh, what they were gonna do with the.
But according to Tom's definition, early, it, any part of the building, whether it's the apartment or not.
Access to it is on Main Street or not, a apartment is facing Main Street.
Yeah.
It's fronting on Main Street.
Right. You can't have this use in this zone.
So frontage is not access, apartment access, frontage is just, if I have a wind, if I have a bathroom window facing out on Main Street, that's frontage.
That's typically used.
And they thought about it the other way, they thought about access.
I thought about it originally too.
But remember what they're saying, you're not saying mixed use, they're saying a completely residential apartment building.
So this one shouldn't even be in front of us.
Nope.
Well, first the question is, is, hold on, I, I gotta, I gotta question you, because I'm, I'm, now I'm thoroughly confused.
Should've brought yourself some coffee for this one, right?
Alright.
Don't tell him that, he's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna create his own YouTube channel in a minute.
When this application showed up to us in February or March, whenever it showed up to us, it was a freestanding apartment.
That's the way they present it.
Right. Now, you're saying it's a freestanding apart, somewhere between, between then and now, it became a mixed use. That's not how it was presented, or.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Right.
Do we just, we have to, we have to send this back to them?
Yeah.
And they need to, they need to redo this completely, because we have, we have two buildings, two lots, one application, and we don't even know whether or not they're going for a freestanding apartment building, or they are maintaining the mixed use and the variance that they're applying for possibly doesn't even apply, let alone, we don't know which building it's going to apply to.
Oh, don't even go there.
And, and, and just to note for Antonio to make him happy, to verify.
They pulled the deed, they, they changed the deed, they changed the empty. They changed the empty.
Alright, so, so hold on, hold on one second. Cindy, this is important, you need to write that. I'm gonna make a motion that I rescind my motion for approving the first F A R variance until we have a clarification on the application. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, he abstains, so.
Are you?
Yeah, there's no application.
Well, he didn't vote on the first one, so. Alright, so. Alright, so. So Andy, we're gonna need you to verify, is it a freestanding apartment or a mixed use?
And do we, and is, is this variance even still need to be before us?
Special counsel. We need a counsel.
Great, another lawyer, just what we need.
Do you want them to combine the building, or are you gonna leave it?
We can't set the precedence on that because there's other applications that have gone before where it's a merging of, of lots that is to take place at the end, you know, um, in the building permit process, so it can be a condition.
That's what I said.
It can be a condition, but at this point.
We don't know what the application is.
We don't even know what we're hearing.
So.
We don't know the use.
Let's have Jim, I think Jim Burke is the special counsel, so let's have him come in.
Am I a man?
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge's definition of fun.